Good evening. I'd like to welcome everyone to this evening's commission meeting. At this time, I'll call the meeting to order, and if everyone could stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
My Pledge of Allegiance is to apply the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
For the record, do we have any listening in on the telephone line tonight? Could you identify yourself? Okay, I guess we have none. Next item on the agenda is the adoption of the agenda. Commissioners, have you had a chance to review the agenda?
I have.
And do you have any modifications or additions?
I have none.
Okay. With that, then, I'll call for a motion.
I make a motion that we adopt the agenda.
Second.
A motion is second. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carried. Appointments, we have, for the Economic Development Advisory Board, we have one resignation. The unexpired term ends January 1, 2022, so we will be receiving applications from anyone that's interested in serving on the Economic Development Advisory Board. This was a newly formed board, and it's been very active, been very active, creating policies, reviewing applications, so if you have interest, please submit your application. Next item on the agenda is the consent agenda. We had no modifications to the consent agenda during the adoption, so at this time, I'll call for a motion.
I move that we approve the consent agenda as presented.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carried. Item four, executive session. The executive sessions were the purpose of discussing data relating to financial affairs or trade secrets of second parties, so I move that we recess for an executive session pursuant to confidential data relating to financial affairs or trade secrets of second parties, the exception of KSA 75-4319B4 for discussion of financial matters relating to second parties. The open meeting will resume at 10 till 6 in the Civic Center. So do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carried, and in the executive session, we'll have city manager, assistant city manager, city attorney, finance, director of finance, and check out. And we will be meeting in the Veterans Room, and we'll go out the entrance door and go in the southeast door to the Veterans Room. We're back in session. There's no action taken from executive session, so we will continue with items for commission action. Item A, consider a request to partner with LaBette Health to expand the Independence Healthcare Center. We have Brian Williams with LaBette Health, the CEO. Would you like to address the commission to start with?
Yeah, I appreciate the opportunity to be here with you tonight. Jeff told me I was on a timer.
So that's just something for you to...
Thank you. Kelly, I've got one for you, but I'll talk off of this for a second. So every year, Kansas Hospital Association works with John Leatherman at Kansas State University and prepares this and talks about the economic impact of healthcare in Kansas. And in rough numbers, you use a $0.60. There's a direct impact with job creation, and there's indirect impact from the downstream, people filling up their car, generating sales tax, staying in hotels, those kinds of things. Behind that is, and I've highlighted, you know, six years ago, our community suffered a trauma when the hospital closed. That was a $40 million negative economic impact. You know, we rallied together, worked together, and when we opened in 2017, it was basically a $7 million positive economic impact, following about a $5 million positive economic impact during the construction, because construction itself generates economic impact. And then in 2020, when this report was prepared by K-State, because we had to do this as part of our USDA application, for some of the new commissioners, you didn't see this, the other, you know, the older commissioners, not in old, but in tenure, not in age, but tenure, saw it. So we would be at approximately $9.6 million. Our annual labor budget now is $3 million, not $2.4, so we're over $10 million in an annual economic impact. The other thing behind that is a meeting record. You know, to your city staff's credit, I met with them on my fourth day on the job of being a new hospital CEO, and I met at Community National Bank with Representative Kelly and then Fred Meyer, and there's that kind of city wish list that we would have an emergency room, observation beds, which we have fulfilled. And this new phase moves us towards the third phase. If there's not enough synergies and enough patient population, we'll never get to an ambulatory surgery center, and the rest you can kind of read. And then we went through really a tumultuous time. You know, I think the city ultimately took on a tremendous financial liability when you got the city, you know, got the hospital donated to you, and there was a memorandum of understanding, and this kind of highlights why that wasn't necessarily a good thing long-term for the city. So that's a little bit of a walk down memory lane. And then I promise I'll be done. So January 1, St. John's Clinic, looking at convenient care. You know, we went from we were going to have a hospital to all of a sudden, it was going to be a urgent care, then it became a super urgent care, and we all had to kind of go, what's a super urgent care? We'd never heard of one, and it was really an express care with a CT scanner. Then we kind of ignored that offer, and I think at the time, they asked for $2 or $3 million to support this, which anybody could do. Jeff Green and his family stepped forward on March 1 in this room, donated some money, land to us, and we all worked together, and Lisa Wilson, several people are in this picture, October 2. We moved pretty quick. I mean, we ought to be proud of ourselves that we moved quick. So just like we did on Peter Pan, you know, we kind of did a three-way partnership. The, you know, public entity, the city put in $130,000 or something, the private entity, we put in $130,000 or so, and the county put in their money. The county was, county's going to put in their money, and, you know, we expanded the road, which really benefited the community and the citizens. I'm not going to bore you with going through. I've tabbed it if you guys have questions. There's 56, 59 pages of stuff to support the request. It's going to take us about $4 million to add on. I've got an $18 million project that I've started during a global pandemic that I didn't expect. Hospital's full, our staff's working extremely hard. You know, Dr. Orik last night had 23 patients. A normal caseload in a hospital for hospitals would be 15, a max of 20. Our ICU's full. A third of the patients in the hospital are positive COVID patients in isolation rooms. So, you know, most people would say I'm probably crazy for trying to expand Independence Healthcare Center, but I want to fulfill kind of the commitments that we made to this community. So I thought I might focus, and I've got four of these.
Just give mine to Leonard.
So really, I thought I'd just focus and help you, and I think we all can agree that healthcare is good for economic development, economic impact, and without schools and without healthcare, pretty hard to attract any employers here. So I thought about, what are the, you know, if I'm sitting in your shoes, what's the benefit? And if a citizen said, well, we don't want our money to go for this, well, here's a good elevator speech. Public and private partnerships are extremely important anywhere in the United States, but most especially in rural areas where we have, we live and we exist in an austere environment. You don't have unlimited resources. I don't have unlimited resources. Our constituents don't have unlimited resources. So the more that we can work together, the better the outcome. Continuous improvement and growth. People challenged me in here five years ago. I remember a lady came up and pulled and snapped my badge off my shirt and said, oh, you're from LaBette. And she goes, how are you going to make sure that you don't fail like Mercy did? And I said, you know, I don't know. I'm pretty sure if it doesn't work out, I'll lose my job. Please be nicer to the next guy that comes behind me, was sort of my response. I said, if you'll help me a little, I promise you I'll lay my job on the line, and I'm the only one that'll lose it. And we kind of, I think we won people over. The only way to sustain healthcare in rural America is to continue to try to grow. We live in an environment, five years ago, I got here, September 1, 2015, there were 11 hospitals. Today, there's eight. There will be five. There will be three. Healthcare in our country is not sustainable in its current form. So how do we make sure that there's a Level 3 trauma center that has a helicopter outside of it, that has a great relationship with your local EMS? It's, we have to kind of work together and pool our resources. How do the citizens, so the citizens in the community, years ago, I met with Dave and Kelly, and I think Lacey was there. I think there was, you'd formed like a citizens group, and there were some ideas, and Dave asked me, he said, we need you to tell us, what do you think's realistic, what's sustainable, and what can we do? You know, we want to have a, we want to have a trauma center in Independence, but can we get trauma doctors? Can we sustain it? Can we fund it? We want plastic surgery. Can we get that in a town of, you know, 10,000? So what this does, this new expansion, it provides new outpatient ultrasound services. So between eight to five, there'll be ultrasound services. So now you don't have to travel to our main facility. Ultrasound, more and more, there's a lot more ultrasound-guided procedures. There's a lot, a lot more ultrasound in ERs. There's a lot more procedures that are being done by ultrasound. 20 years from now, I don't even know that we'll have inpatient-type settings, because more and more things are moving to an outpatient because of technology and also because of reimbursement. It'll expand our lab space. It'll double the size of the lab space that we have. Our lab's busting at the seams right now, especially as we're processing all these COVID, you know, samples and trying to process the patient load that we have. We didn't do a great job, because we never thought we would outgrow that space, you know, in three years. The community's embraced us. You've embraced us. We have a great working relationship. This would add shell space. It was also a way to cut the budget. You know, making it shell space instead of infilling it, cut about a half a million dollars out of the budget. So when the first budget came in, it was closer to $5 million. In that meeting, we talked about the community wants more physicians. They love the fact that we have physician assistants and nurse practitioners, but when you become a Medicare age and you start having hypertension, hyperlipidemia, you start having these other comorbidities, you really want to see maybe someone with a little more training. And that takes nothing away from physician assistants and nurse practitioners. So this would allow us to add two new physicians, because right now, we have our staff stacked like cordwood in there. You can see our parking lots. We don't really have room to really even add anybody. The other thing that it does is it doubles the specialist space, allowing us to create more specialist rotations, and then sometimes the specialists could be there at the same time. Some specialties complement each other, and you get synergies when they're there at the same time, so you could have oncology there in the specialist clinic and have a general surgeon there at the same time, and they could confer over patients, and that just improves care and improves efficiencies. We have a clinic off-site, a women's and children's clinic on Laurel Street. What that would allow us to do is consolidate that, and then all the efficiencies that go with having that under one roof. They'll also OB, obstetrics is a huge user of ultrasound, so that would basically improve the quality of the care here in Independence, Kansas. And then I think I showed you the floor plan in there, the sketch. It preserves future space for ambulatory surgery. When we do this, we're still planning that there will be a Phase 3, so this is Phase 2.5. And then that would even up the building, and we could connect it, and the hallways would be planned by the architects and those things. So the current facility was designed for four, you know, I hate that I'm reading this to you, but for the viewers, there are four primary care providers, four specialist providers. We actually have there today 13. We have seven primary care providers. So we have three people in an office that was designed for only one person. We have six specialist providers that rotate through there. With this new facility, we'd have the ability to have seven primary care providers and eight specialist providers. Dr. Hill wanted more time than one day a week, so we had to really scramble to create a second day, so it, you know, it could expand. We could probably add cardiology. There's all kinds of things that we could do, but right now, today, we don't have any space. And then new models of healthcare for rural healthcare. The primary health center that be is a new rural healthcare model that's being developed in Colorado, Kansas, New Mexico, and Oklahoma. I know a couple, I think there's five hospitals in Kansas that were part of that pilot. And then about two weeks ago or three weeks ago, Health and Human Services released the Community Health Access and Rural Transformation Chart Model. What we built here in Independence, many of the components in these models are already here, so we've got a great platform to build on for the future of healthcare, and I think healthcare in Independence, Kansas is very sustainable, but we do need to continue to grow. So I asked for $2 million of economic development support. I don't expect that. I'll be grateful for whatever you can do to help us. My understanding, when we talked about economic development, you know, a few years ago, I came before you and asked for $200,000, and then the county gave $100. We talked a little bit about the fund at that time. There was maybe $600,000 in it, and there were some franchise, you know, taxes and things. I've since talked to Kelly. I mean, I don't want to strap the, you know, I don't want to strap the city. I think it's what staff feels like you guys can do in your budget. If you can't help, I'll, it'll delay us being able to do it. We'll probably ultimately still do it, but it might be three years from now. You know, it may not be now. The urgency really is, is I've got an architect firm, and I've got a construction manager here today, and there'll be some cost savings if we go ahead and do it now, and we needed to do it probably a year ago. The other advantage is to doing it now is with the disruption in the market, there's a lot of physicians looking for positions and moving, and there's a lot of physicians that would like to be in rural America as opposed to urban cities, and so I think we can benefit from that, too. So subject to your questions, that one sheet of paper would be kind of what I would focus on. The $200,000 a year was just my memory and recollection of there being $600,000 there. If it's not there, it's not there. What I would do is get a loan conventionally from a bank or consortium here in Independence. You guys know I like to treat, keep your money local. We would take the risk on the loan. City's not obligated, but if the city's obligated to some amount of money over a 10-year period, then I have a clear identifiable source of principal repayment. And we would probably try to do a fundraiser to raise donor dollars, and then we would put the balance of the funds in and take all the operational risk. I guess I could have taken my mask down, sorry. For the camera, people will know who I am now. Oh, Kelly. I'll give you this. I know that's a lot of information. I answer any questions you have. This has probably been a work in process for like maybe a year, and...
Commissioners, do you have questions for Brian?
I have none.
I'm good. Thank you, Brian.
Okay.
Thank you.
Healthcare is a critical factor to look at at this time, as we're in the middle of the pandemic, and the new term, we're going into twendemic season with flu and also still dealing with COVID. The numbers keep climbing. Healthcare is critical. The question that is before us would be the amount that the city is able to participate in. What we had been presented was far less than what we've heard, and it was a five-year, not a 10-year program. You know, my, my hope is for us to look to be able to go as far as we can, you know. If we can't go 2 million, can we go one and a half over 10 years or even at least a million over 10 years? I know initially, we had the, when we faced the dilemma, and we looked at St. John's and CRMC, we had initiated immediately a $3 million offer to both for operating expenses. We modified our budget to generate the service amount for that initially, and when it fell through, I think the mill levy was already put in. We generated $250,000, $260,000 in additional funds that went to the debt reduction part of our general fund, and that mill levy stayed, and then we added the additional $5 million for capital improvements later on. So to go on with the discussion, commissioners, are you interested in looking to see what we can do beyond what has been presented by the Economic Development Advisory Board? Commissioner Hayes?
I can go first. First of all, we all appreciate the investment that LaBette has made in our community, and we are excited about your success here, your growth, and the way the community has responded is obviously your services are meeting a need. To continue to grow in terms of the number of services you're providing, the demand for your services is up, and as you have demonstrated yourself, the profitability for those services is measurable. So we all celebrate and marvel at that as we are considering this economic development initiative. We did also, with the same care and understanding that we did at the initial offering of benefits, create an Economic Development Advisory Board. We seated on that Economic Development Advisory Board qualified and representative people of the community. I think I also appreciate their skills and their understanding of what works and what doesn't work in regard to economic development, and so I'm in, I'm in favor of trusting their advice to us and proceeding with the incentive as advised by the Economic Development Advisory Board.
Okay. Thank you, Commissioner Hayes. Commissioner Yussisi?
Yeah, I would like to thank Brian for being here and the remarks that he's made today. As our medical facility continues to grow, that means the growth of Independence will continue. Services down the road, ambulatory services that will be provided will keep people here. Once those services are provided here, they will not have to go to other facilities to have those services performed. So it's vital for us to work hand in hand with LaBette Health and to assist them in whatever way that we can. But I am also interested in looking at if there are other, other areas that we can look at where we might come up something on more of a longer tenure that might, that might work, that we might be able to work within our finances, and at least see what's available out there and work toward that, and see if it's something feasible, and if it isn't, it isn't, but I would like a little more further information, a little more depth, and see where that takes us to.
So do I understand you saying that you're interested in looking to see if we can go beyond the $50,000 a year to...
Yes.
For five years to see if we can achieve...
If that's feasible, yes.
Okay.
To me, I think it's worth looking into to see if it's feasible.
Okay.
And if there's a way we can figure out to do that, then it's just vitally important to the community and to sustaining what rural healthcare is gonna, is looking like and gonna look like in the future. What we're facing now, we're going to continue to face with this COVID-19, there will always be something on the horizon that's going to affect the world, and so that's something we're going to have to deal with for, you know, for just a very long time. So if there's something out there that we can do, I'm willing to look at all options and at least consider them and see if it's economically feasible for us to do that.
Okay. Then if, for our next step, then probably would need to, to have leadership, and Kelly, you work with finance to look at what ways we could generate more money for a 10-year commitment and the amount?
Is there any amount you have in mind, and also are you wanting to provide the money to them upfront or give them so much per year?
There would be, be two options if we did the same thing we did, we considered for St. John's and CRMC, if we looked at, at a bond amount that would be upfront, or it could be, if it's conceivable, to go with an annual contribution or commitment.
Okay, and what amounts would you like us to look at? The $1 million, is that the amount you want us to look at over 10 years?
I guess, I guess first, Brian, if we look, we're able to provide $1 million over 10 years, is that, you know, we don't want to, if it's not going to work to help with the project, then we could just... we could just, we shouldn't do it. But if we could provide a million over 10 years, is that acceptable?
So anything you do, I'm grateful for. So I'm grateful for $250,000. I don't want to leave here and you guys think I'm not. I do want to make sure everybody knows the parameters with that $200,000. When Mickey and I and Kelly sat in there and with the county, there was going to be no parameters to it. It was just going to be money given to us. And I said, I said, I'm not comfortable with that. Put me at risk. I don't want a handout. And then I wrote something and Jeff put it together and I went and presented it to the county. So I want to make sure everybody knows that was something I came up with. If you, so a couple of things. One, I don't want to increase the tax burden of the citizens of Independence, Kansas. So I don't want to mill anything. I would really, I guess my request would be, could staff look at it? And if there's $300,000 come in, you guys decide that, hey, we can do $150,000 a year. We can do 100. We can do $10. And then go from there. So I would be grateful for $2 million. I'd be equally grateful for a million. I'd be grateful for $250,000. I've got to find $4 million. I think there's enough support in this community to raise a million dollars in donor funds. I was counting, I was only going to put a million in. If I got to find $2 million, I'll by gosh find $2 million for Independence, Kansas. So I would be ecstatic if I walk out here and you said, hey, a million dollars. The important thing for me, because of our financials and stuff, is if we put a lot of hooks in it. I have to curate as a liability on my on my books. I don't want the really the commission to change. And I plan and I go borrow money and I obligate the hospital and then it changed. So I just want something that I know for the next 10 years. And again, Jeff would have to advise you on how you draft that document legally. And if it's $500,000, it's $500,000. But I think in talking for the last year, I think there's around $300,000 maybe that comes for economic development. I think it's a staff and a commission decision of how much you want to invest in the healthcare sector. So does that does that help? I mean, I
I think I think it does because, you know, the the thing when we look at the perception for our community, we've we've been looking at how our actions are perceived with people coming into town. And with the the healthcare industry, it's a big factor. If you're looking to relocate to a small community, at what age you are, what kind of healthcare? And we have to show and project that we are concerned about the quality and the extent of our healthcare. And in the last years, there's been a lot of improvements. You know, I've heard a lot of compliments, the partnering with the EMS, the standardization there and the protocol for the paramedics and, you know, the the sharing of knowledge and ability. We're going, we're going forward. And in addition to the facility does the same thing. And the reality, when you start using the services, how important the emergency room is at 1 o'clock, 2 o'clock in the morning. And you've got the helicopter to do transport to a specialty facility and the the quality care. You know, I think we have to push forward to to provide the community with the best healthcare we have. We have to go out on a on a limb.
So so a suggestion I'd make to you too is if I don't hire two physicians and they're in Independence, then I have to pay $500,000 back for every physician I don't, something like that. I mean, I'm fine. That was the major on the list. That was the major resonating thing is they wanted more physicians. When you look at some of the other clinics that are in town, there is, we're the only ones that have a permanent physician. So LaBette Health's all in. We're vested. We support Neo Walla. We try to support downtown. I got an email today about 57 signs. We're going to give money for that. So, I mean, we're partners. And what you said, Mayor, five years ago, I don't think it's any big secret, we struggled, you know, in our relationship. You have a very professional, very excellent person in Dave Callen and Sean Wallace. And I do believe that cooperation. And I think there was a concern too when we did it that I might show up. I don't show up at your meetings. I don't get involved in the ambulance traffic. But we have saved lives because we cooperate and we work together. And so I think in the end, I don't want to ask more than what you feel like you can do. And it's a leadership decision on the value that you place in healthcare. And that's one of the fundamental questions our country has to come to grips with. We're the only country in the world that's a major industrialized nation that's never answered the question, what value do we place on healthcare? That's why we have four, all four, we're the only country that has four major forms of healthcare. So analogous to that, I think, you know, I respect each and every one of you. I think it's for Kelly and Lacey and David to look at the budget. They decide. And I think you do have to respect and listen to the advice of the Economic Development Committee. One feedback would be in future applications, I never got an opportunity to present to them. So I think they would have made a different presentation if I had come and explained the context of that. So I'm, I think they really a little bit were flying a little bit blindfolded. And that maybe is my fault because I said there was some urgency. You know, I just want to get it going and deliver for Independence. So that's my recommendation.
Okay.
Mayor, I did want to just point out on the economic development, it's also transportation funds. Currently, we're utilizing the bulk of that for our street projects. And if the sales tax did not pass, we wouldn't have, you know, we would still need to utilize that for those projects or or look at something different. So I just wanted to to point that out as well.
And that's why I think we need to look, not tonight, but look at it and then come back to us. Take time. I don't want to put pressure on you to make it, to give us the information now.
Right, right.
But later, you know, go back, look, take that into consideration and then come back with a
Do you want the information I have on hand that that we discussed in the Economic Development Advisory Board as well?
I don't think so, not tonight.
Okay.
Yeah, I thank you, but I think, give you time to look over from what we've talked about tonight to go that direction.
And is he able to wait until after the sales tax election? Because that's going to make a big difference in in what we're able to do.
Yeah.
November 3rd.
Oh, yeah. Yeah, I'm gonna, I'll tell you what I'm gonna do. I'm gonna start spending money because I'm gonna get the architects going. And we're gonna get it done. So, you know, honestly, I mean, talk to the voters. I mean, they should vote for this. It's a sales tax.
Right.
Right, and I think that's a selling point for the sales tax because it does allow us to do this. It takes some relief off of our existing funds where we're looking at streets that, you know, this is really tied to the the vote for the the sales tax continuation. That it is important, you know, it generates in, over the 10-year period, $20 million that saves on our our property tax and other spending, you know. It it allows people passing through town to contribute to our healthcare, to our recreation, to the improvement of our streets, the maintenance of our streets, the ADA, the building improvements. So, you know, the that's a an excellent source to give us relief from our taxes and still provide a way to go forward and be progressive. That if we relied upon our our adware property tax, we would drive ourselves farther away. And I, if I remember from the presentation at First Friday, the funds generated by that special use sales tax represents, is it 40 mils?
Yes.
40 mils. And you look at at the way we're gathering that one cent sales tax. It 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 doesn't affect us like a 40 mil increase would on all of our our finances because this way, you know, we're we're scheduling events, people coming to town for these. They're they're contributing to our healthcare, our rec programs.
So Neosho County passed a 3/4 cent sales tax for their EMS. It generates, I think, $80,000 or $90,000 a month to the hospital. Now, ours, LaBette Health, is restricted. We get a 1/4 cent sales tax. I have to present every year and ask if we can keep any any excess funds. And what we use that for is to buy ambulances. So sales tax has been used. It's very, you know, it's a very effective way to generate funds. But again, I mean, I don't want LaBette Health to be responsible for adding to the tax burden of this community. I've got many friends here now. I love this community as much as I love Parsons and Shnute. So it wouldn't be the first time I've been told no. Ask Gary Hogseth, you know. And I talked to him this afternoon and I told him, I said, remember the introduction you made to the Optimist Club? When he was the city commissioner, he introduced me. He said, you know, here's what this guy's done. And he goes, I didn't do anything to help him. And he felt like he had an opportunity to have helped us, but you guys didn't know me five years ago. You know me now. So, but, you know, I think I respect Kelly. I would like working with her. You guys look at it, Lacey, and if you can help us, great. And November 3rd, November 4th will be fine. You can call me. I'll call you at 8:00 AM.
Yeah. No, that would that would be great. That would give us time to
I I will say I have I have the information that you are requesting.
Yeah.
I I do already have it if you would like me to share.
I would like to have it to us first so we can look at it too to follow along.
Okay.
But thanks. Okay. Thank you, Brian.
Mayor, have a good night, Jeff.
Thank you.
I'm way over my time.
Thank you, Brian. Thank you, Lacey.
Okay, consider authorize, the next item is consider authorizing approval of CDBG-CV grant funding received from the Kansas Department of Commerce for 17 qualifying local businesses. This is Lacey.
Yes.
What's the CV stand for?
I don't remember off the top of my head, honestly. I'll look it up for you. I'm covering this item for Tricia, actually. She she prepared, she administered this grant for us. And we we set out, applications went live on June 24th, 2020. And we received 29 applications. And of those, 17 of them were qualified, eligible applicants. So some were eliminated as they did not show a revenue loss in 2020 compared to 2019, per the state requirements. The 17 that we have in this packet have turned in all of their information and we are ready to go move on to the next step in the process. And it is a a pretty long process. So this is, it's not checks will be cut tomorrow. It's we have to sign that we approve these. We need to send it to the state. And the state will then review all of the documentation and requirements to make sure they are in agreement with our assessment. And then we will issue checks, cash to us, and we will issue checks to the businesses. So there's there's still a process after tonight.
This this grant program is based for relief due to COVID losses for the businesses?
Correct.
And you had a very short application window to get the grant turned in to receive the funds? And it's pretty time sensitive for distribution too, isn't it?
For distribution, yes. We have to have, all of these grants have to be closed and the the funds have to be spent by by us and the businesses by December 20th, I believe. I I do know that, so to qualify, all of these businesses have already, have submitted receipts for what they have spent the potential funds on. So they're asking for reimbursement. So we would be able to move as quickly as the state allows after this.
Okay. Commissioners, do you have any questions for Lacey concerning?
I do not, but thank you and thank
Tricia did a lot of work.
Tricia as well for the hard work to put all this together and to get it done in a timely manner. Thank you.
Thank you, Lacey. No, I don't. I I looked over the information that was provided. I don't have any questions.
I know you've put a lot of time and research into these grant programs. And not only the grants that we've had for the city, but, you know, to take time to reach out to our our businesses. But you've got a busy schedule and, you know, we appreciate you taking the initiative to get involved and help Trish get this done. So if there's no further questions, then I'll call for a motion?
I make a motion to move to authorize distribution of CDBG-CV funds to the listed qualified businesses and for the mayor to sign all related documents required from the state of Kansas.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carried. Thank you, Lacey.
Thank you.
Item D, consider authorizing staff, no, excuse me. Item C, I shouldn't mark it off till after I read it, I guess, but you do get done faster.
Yes.
Item C, consider bids for demolition of five condemned structures. David?
Mayor, we received two bids for demolition of five structures from G.G. Dozier and Jim Bechner from JR B Industries. We recommend JR B Industries at 27.5 with his combined bid was the low bid. And he has done good work for us on the bids he has received prior. Both of them do good jobs when they get the bids. So we're recommending JR B.
Okay. Commissioners, questions for David?
I have none.
I have none, Mayor.
Okay, if there's no further questions, then I'll entertain a motion.
I move to award a demolition contract for five previously condemned structures in the amount of $27,500 to JR B Industries, Inc.
Second.
You have a motion and a second. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carried. Item, item D, consider authorizing staff to negotiate a contract for engineering services with PEC for advanced metering and water line replacement. Kelly, are you going to stand in for Terry?
Sure. We did receive proposals from eight firms. We ranked the top four and we selected PEC as the top. And we would like to have authority to move forward with negotiating a contract with them to bring back for your approval.
Okay, and this is for an additional revolving low interest loan that we
Yeah, this will be the second loan. We had one already and that one was old. We couldn't add to it. So we had to do a new one.
Okay, Commissioners, do you have any questions for Kelly?
I have none.
I'm good, Mayor.
Okay, it seemed pretty straightforward with two-inch, four-inch, and six-inch water line replacement and the automated automated meters will really provide an improvement to our system. So if we have no further questions, I'll call for a motion?
I move to authorize city staff to negotiate a contract with PEC for commission approval.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carried. Item E, consider a request to vacate 27th Street from Main Street to the alley south of Myrtle Street.
Mayor, I have Miranda is present here for any questions and they are working, continuing to and she can answer those to be able to vacate clear to Myrtle Street. But at this time, they'd like to move forward with their project and they're just going to go to the alley, which would be the property they own. So from Main to the alley. Miranda, do you have anything you want to add? Miranda, do you have anything you want to add, or?
Just an update from, um, the Quality Motors is they, we're trying to work with the owner of the property to purchase it. Um, they just can't get to a negotiation that's agreeable for the both of them at this point. So, um, to continue with the project as they want to do, we just went ahead and went to the alley and we'll provide all the easements that we need to, um, to allow for that. And the surveyors are actually coming next week to go ahead and survey the property just so we have it. So they're gonna go ahead and do the work to do any kind of extra, um, survey work needed for easements and whatnot to get that legally done with you guys, so.
Okay. So then we just address the other portion at a later date possibly, but.
Yep.
Okay. Uh, Commissioners, do you have any questions?
I have none.
I'm good.
Okay, if there's no further questions, then we'll entertain a motion.
I move to approve vacating Twenty-seventh Street from Main Street to the alley south of West Myrtle Street while retaining easement rights for utilities located in this area.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carried. Item F, consider awarding installation services for the city's wireless fixed broadband system project.
Mayor, I would like to note that my son's company did bid on this, and I, would you like me to leave the room while you discuss this item? I was not involved in it, but I would be happy to leave the room.
Doesn't bother Commissioner Hayes? How do you prefer?
Kelly, I think that's up to you.
I, I would feel more comfortable if I left the room and.
You would feel more comfortable doing that?
Yes.
Okay.
We, uh, we like to, uh, use, uh, the words, uh, and abundance of caution, uh, liberally these days, and so, uh, while Kelly is, uh, has my, a great deal of trust from me, this seems to be the cautious thing to do.
Yeah. Just to show her we're not holding any preference. It's good to.
No preference.
Yes. Okay. So, Lacy, would you like to?
Yes. Um, so the City of Independence solicited for proposals on the installation of a fixed broadband, um, equipment for the city's wireless infrastructure. And this project focuses on expanding our, our city, I'm gonna call it our internal network, but, um, in addition to that, we received spark funds to help with building that infrastructure that will then facilitate, um, the ability to have a, an external network that, uh, services the community in our public gathering spaces, so spaces like the park and the zoo, um, Memorial Hall, even downtown, you know, right-ofways and sidewalks downtown and the area for the farmer's market and things like that. Um, so this project is for the installation of that equipment purchased through that grant, um, for both internal and external wireless, um, access. Um, we did receive two bids. We, we posted this for bids and, um, the bids came back from Zinzer Electric and TelXP Communications. So Zinzer Electric is out of Cherryville, Kansas, and TelXP Communications out of Tulsa, Oklahoma. And, um, we recommend awarding this project to Zinzer Electric, um, for a total of seventeen thousand two hundred and fifty dollars.
Okay, Commissioners, do you have a question for Lacy?
Uh, Zinzer is the low bidder on this project, right?
Correct.
And you did review their, uh, their configuration and it met all your specifications for the project?
Correct.
Sounds good.
Commissioner Yussisi?
Sounds good to me. I, I, um, yeah, I was surprised by the, the difference in the two bids.
So were we.
It was quite a huge amount.
Yes.
Is, are they both bidding the same piece of equipment?
But, um, actually, to, to make it cheaper and within our budget, because we have very tight budget, um, we chose to buy the equipment that we wanted separately so that we could get the best price for that and, and forego any additional markup that, that the installer would pass on to us. So we've already bought the equipment. This was purely installation.
So those prices are just installation we're looking at?
Yes. It's, it's labor hours and then small miscellaneous screws and some antenna attachments and things like that.
Oh, okay, good.
Yep.
Yeah, that, that clarifies the, the difference in price. So with this system, did I understand that you said the public would have access in public right-ofways or areas at the park or in?
Yes.
Public buildings?
Yes. The, the, the focus of this project, a lot of this equipment will be installed in the park, um, to have, that area will have Wi-Fi access, including it's the, you know, the park, the zoo, the, the stadium area, the 4-H buildings. It, it's the, pretty much the whole complex.
Yeah, and that was to address some of the communication air, issues you have out there just for city business?
Yes. Part of this was to start is we're bringing on to the system some of those outside buildings. And then with Lacy and the Wi-Fi and, yeah, so it's both city and community access.
Okay, good. Yeah, I, I don't have any further questions, Commissioners, do you?
I'm good.
If.
I'm good.
If not, then I'll entertain a motion?
I make a motion, I move to authorize city staff to award the project to Zinzer Electric, LLC in the amount of seventeen thousand two hundred and fifty dollars.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carried.
Thank you.
Thank you, Lacy. Uh, well.
Kelly.
Yeah. Shall we tell her what we did or just keep her in suspense? Motion passed. Okay, are you ready?
Yes.
The next item on the agenda are the reports. Item A, the twenty-twenty census update.
Well, when I went online to try to find the, uh, exact amounts for each city, they have modified what they have online. Um, so all I was able to find is the state response rate, which includes what the census takers have also done and the self-response, which is at ninety-nine point nine percent for Kansas. So that is the update. As you may know, there was, um, a, a judge order to extend it to the end of October, and then that was appealed and that was upheld. Um, so it was kind of extended, but it's kinda, I don't know if they took some of that stuff down on their side already, but that was the information I was able to find today.
The last census wasn't that good of response. Was it in the eighties or low nineties?
Um, I'm not sure for this day. I don't see April. She may have known that.
Okay.
Yeah, I don't, I don't recall.
That's really good.
But that sounds really good.
It does. So, okay, great. Uh, any questions concerning that, Commissioners?
No, but, you know, let's just, uh, celebrate for just a moment that, uh, a lot of that work went to, um, to volunteers who took up the, uh, the cause and went out and did that, uh, collecting the census data from those who had not self-responded, uh, in spite of the fact that it's a dangerous world and, uh, it's, uh, COVID-nineteen is out there and, uh, and, uh, so I just applaud all of those people who participated in, uh, US Census data collection. I really appreciate their efforts.
And the ones that did the door hangers, our local people, volunteers did that as well. They hung, uh, several thousand door hangers.
Yeah, and I think that's where we need to acknowledge our, two of our Commissioners that took their time. Commissioner Hayes and Commissioner Yussisi were part of the team that, uh, distributed the door hangers and, and thank you guys for taking your time to, to do that because, uh, you know, I, I honestly did not realize the importance that how responding to the census affects the, uh, federal funds that we receive. And over a ten-year period, I believe, per person, is it between forty and fifty thousand dollars? It's pretty significant. And, uh, you know, it's, it, it's worth all the effort we, we put, so thank the public for taking the time to respond, to fill out your census and also the volunteers and our two Commissioners for taking their time.
And we had several people on the complete count committee. I think we had the biggest complete count committee. The guy came and talked to us and he was pretty impressed how many people we had involved, so.
We did have a good response, so thank you. The next item is the city board minutes. Commissioners, do you have any questions concerning the city board minutes?
I'm good.
I'm good, Mayor.
Next item, uh, item seven is city manager comments?
Go off a minute. Um, I wanted to give you an update on our resurfacing project. Uh, so far, they've completed Link's Lane, um, from, um, Morningside Drive, Morningside Place, North Twentieth from Cottonwood to Pine, North Nineteenth from Laurel to Pine, Pine from Twentieth to Sixteenth, and they started on Coffeyville Avenue from Second to Cement, but they had to go back to Highway one sixty-six, another project, and finish up there. But we anticipate they'll be back sometime next week. They still have Dean Street from Railroad to Cottonwood to Dew and Fifteenth from Cottonwood to Sycamore and the airport entrance to the terminals were what they have left when they come back. But we've gotten a lot of good comments, a lot of good public feedback on the work that's been done.
Somebody mentioned Cement Street is being resurfaced. Is the county, that's not one of ours, is it?
Cement Street is, um, along the city limits is actually half-city and half-county. That's one of those that the line's right in the middle.
Okay.
Um, and at one time, we paid for half the cost to do it and they paid for half the cost.
Yeah.
But the part that goes out of the city limits would be for the county.
That would be all county?
Yes.
Somebody mentioned that they saw some paving down on cement, wondered if that was a city's.
It wasn't.
I didn't think so.
Too many years ago that we did that joint project.
Yeah, we shared.
Yes. Um, so that's probably something the county's doing. Um, also, the park plan is moving along. We're scheduling a, uh, meeting, uh, with the committee next Monday to try to go over the, um, there's three preliminary con- concepts that's been prepared. We're gonna review those. So that is, uh, ongoing as well.
Has a time been set for that meeting?
Um, yeah, I sent it out. I believe it's at nine AM on Monday. I think, I sent you a calendar invite.
Yeah.
And then also, we're working on the, uh, information that Commissioner Hayes asked for for Building D. We went over some of that with him this week.
Okay.
And then we're gathering some additional information. And once I have that all together, I will give, uh, binders to, to you two, so you all have the same data. And then we have that, um, special meeting coming up on the fifteenth that will be the programming for the, uh, nineteen sixteen City Hall and the fire EMS. Um, and then also that we'll finish up our security training. And that's at nine AM.
Okay.
And that's all I have.
Yeah, I decided to take the motorcycle out and I was away from computer for quite a while today with a cell phone.
Take your motorcycle out and try out the new paved roads.
I will, yeah. Let the oil settle. Okay. Yeah, anything else?
Nope, that's all I have.
Okay, great.
Unless you guys have any questions for me.
Okay. Uh, Commissioner comments? Commissioner Hayes?
I have none.
Commissioner Yussisi?
Yeah, I, I do have one tonight. I got a call from Carol Farthing here, oh, several days ago, and it's, uh, there's gonna be a caravan and we're gonna meet October the fifteenth at five o'clock in Anamaze, the parking lot behind Anamaze. And it's just basically to, um, draw attention that there is a vote coming up in November and encourage people to, uh, get out and vote. Uh, normally on these elections, you don't have a huge turnout. Um, you know, if you're getting twenty-five or thirty percent of your registered voters vote in an election, you're doing pretty good, which is not very good when you consider how many registered voters there are. So the, the whole purpose of it is to get people focused that there is an election, a vote coming up, and it's very important to the community of Independence and to encourage people to, uh, vote early. You don't have to wait till, uh, the election day to vote if you're not comfortable going in with a lot of other people. Uh, you can vote early at the courthouse and you can call them and they'll give you the dates and times that those are open, that you can start voting. But encourage people to mark that on their calendar and please vote. Vote for your community that you live here, that you wanna see continue to improve and grow and prosper. So it's, it's something that, it's something that you need to do. That's why you're here and we're counting on you to vote. Thank you.
Okay.
Here, here.
Yesterday, David sent me a, a photograph of a, a sign that demonstrated the effectiveness of masks. And the first, uh, characterization, someone that was contagious did not have a mask on, somebody that was not contagious did have a mask on, and the risk of infection, uh, was seventy percent. The next diagram had the contagious person with a mask on, the other person did not have a mask on, and the risk of infection was five percent. The last one showed both contagious and the other person with masks, it dropped to one and a half percent. You know, the, there's a lot of discussion, a lot of, uh, ideas on masks, and really the best reason to wear a mask is to protect somebody else because you might not know, if you're a carrier, you could be asymptomatic, you might think you had a cold coming on. And so, you know, think of doing this for somebody else. Think of wearing a mask for somebody else. Somebody else's grandmother, somebody else's baby, somebody else's son, daughter, mother, father, that by us wearing our masks, we're protecting each other. You know, it's not because the government's gonna force us to, but it's because you're concerned about your fellow citizens, that you take a seventy percent chance or even a five percent and you reduce it to one and a half percent. You know, at, at first, you know, I thought if a mask isn't gonna protect me, then why do I wanna bother with it? But now, I, I got multiple masks in each car. I return to the car to get a mask. I, I wear this, it's convenient, but we've gotta look out for each other to bring a, a stop to the rampant spread of COVID. And our responsibility is not to ourself, but it's to each other. So think about, next time you go out, buy you some mask, put some in your car, put some in your pocket, but wear your mask to protect somebody else, so. I just wanted to kinda encourage, that really drove it home when, uh, when David shared that diagram with me that was very clear on why we wear masks, so, thank you. That was all that I wanted to bring tonight, so with that, we go to public concerns. And, uh, David, have you received any requests? Okay, so with that, the next item is an executive session for the purpose of personnel matters of non-elected personnel. So I move that we recess for an executive session pursuant to the non-elected personnel exception, KSA seventy-five dash four-three-one-nine-B-one. For discussion of the performance of personnel, the open meeting will resume at seven oh five in the Veterans Room.
Second.
I have a second. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carried. And for this will be the city manager and the commission. Okay, we're back in session. And there's no action to be taken from executive session. So with that, I make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carried. We're adjourned.